All right, it is now 6:33. We'll call the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee for January 20th to order. Renee, could we do a quick roll call?
Sure. Steve Owen.
Here.
Jeanne Fox.
Here.
Sherri Baron.
Yeah.
Jen Blum.
Yeah.
Robert Clark. Laura Ramsden.
Yeah.
Will Stankowitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, just a few housekeeping for the members. Since we are on Zoom for the meeting, each of our votes will be done by roll call vote, just so that we have everything in order. I do want to, just a quick shout out or thank you to the Lakeham crew for not only doing this live stream, but also on cable for others to participate. The first item on the agenda that I will open up is public participation. I will say to the list of attendees, in there, you will see an option to raise your hand if you would like to speak during public participation. We will recognize you. We ask you to give us your name first and last in the role, the town that you are participating in, and they will give you the option to speak. So I will open up for anybody who would like to participate in public participation. All right. I see a few hands. Give me a minute here just to get through the scroll. All right, I see Mr. DeMello. Welcome.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Thank you. Just, I want to introduce myself for those who may not know me. Henry DeMello. I am acting president from 6 to 12 from the EFL, and I believe somewhere on one of these tiles is the other acting president, Erin Steele from Free Town Elementary. Mr. Superintendent and the members of the school committee, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you on behalf of the Educational Association of Free Town Lakeville. A few weeks ago, the EFL sent you each a statement of concerns along with a poll result of a survey we conducted prior to Christmas break. After getting no acknowledgement of the letter, I have been tasked with reading publicly the association's concerns. First of all, I was to express that as citizens, educators, and parents, there is no group of individuals who believes more strongly that the best place for children is in the classroom in front of teachers. There is no group of individuals who understand more clearly the detrimental effects of remote learning than we. There's no group of individuals who are affected by the stressful nature of hybrid learning more than us and our students. However, even with the keen understanding of the difficulty with hybrid learning, we, the members of EFL, strongly believe that under the current circumstances, the only safe format, and safe is the relative word, in the educating of our children is found within the current hybrid model. The EFL, prior to Christmas, had conducted a survey of the entire faculty to gain a better understanding of their sentiment. The results are clear and unambiguous, with 79.7% of the respondents asking that the hybrid model be maintained. With the understanding of the numerous difficulties and problems created by the hybrid teaching, the faculty, with an overwhelming majority, expressed their clear desire to continue in a hybrid model. With the current positivity rate of COVID and the number of new infections daily within the United States, the Commonwealth, and more pressingly, within the schools here in Lakeville, Free Town Lakeville, it would be dangerous to add more students and in even closer proximity to any of the buildings of the classrooms within the district. Now with the vaccine but a few weeks away, is not a time to grow careless. The EFL therefore implores you to continue with the approach that has succeeded in protecting as many students, teachers, and community members as possible from becoming infected while maintaining the best education under the most strenuous of circumstances. Indeed, many times we have heard from this very committee that the district has been, and I'm quoting, "hitting it out of the park," close quote, with regards to hybrid learning. Now is not the time to change the formula that has brought, by your own admission, success. It is ironic and sadly comical that I am addressing you here remotely and not in person because it has been deemed too dangerous by the governor and the medical community to do so. We, the EFL, realize that each of you are doing the very best under unprecedented circumstances as we are your frontline workers, your essential workers, also doing the best we can. We are all doing the best we can at this moment in time with the information we received from the CDC, the Department of Health, and medical experts. It is also noteworthy that as many members of other districts are advocating to be fully remote, or are indeed fully remote, we, the EFL, are advocating to remain hybrid with our current successful model. Do not now tamper with the success we together have achieved, especially knowing that the end is in sight, the vaccine is near, the return to normalcy is on the horizon. Let us then, in the spirit of cooperation, remember that we are indeed all in this together, and we can move forward for the benefit and the safety of all. And I thank you for allowing me to address this body.
I appreciate your feedback in reading that letter, Mr. DeMello. I see Ms. T.B. Jones.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Can, yes.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate everything that the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District has done to keep their students and their teachers safe. I'm a 59-year-old teacher. I have great, grave concerns moving forward with the idea of bringing additional students back into our schools. My understanding of the new coronavirus variant that has now been discovered in Massachusetts as well as in other states is that it's expected to be here and take over the current coronavirus by March. So I think that it would be a very poor decision to change what is working at this point. In our middle school at this point, just yesterday, we had seven new additional cases. Today, there are two additional cases. And I don't think it is the time to make change. Things are working. We are bringing back the students that need day-to-day help, and I think it would be a grave mistake to bring additional students at this point back into the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue.
Thank you, Chairman Owen and the school committee, Mr. Madeiras and all for hearing me. My name is Jill LaRue. I am a veteran teacher at Free Town Elementary School where I also was a student at. I went through the whole school system and graduated from Aponequid Regional High School. I'm a lifetime, lifelong member, not member, but resident of East Free Town. I too am very concerned about bringing back more students. I have two points to make of this. The first point has to do with safety. At Free Town Elementary School and Asawamse Elementary School, we teach babies. Now, not literal babies, I know this, but our students are young. And sometimes when you look at them, you don't realize that until you get to spend time with them. The hybrid model originally gave us a six-foot distance between students. And if you've ever worked with young children, you know that a six-foot distance with children will give you basically a three-foot distance with children because children move a lot, even under supervision. The three-foot that's being implemented in order to bring more students back is not going to continue at three foot in the classroom. It's going to be closer. The children are going to be much closer, and while the teachers monitor and encourage and try to have children stay apart, at our level, it just doesn't happen. The second point I'd like to make is curriculum. After being a classroom teacher for a long time, the past 12 years, I have moved over and become the physical education teacher at Free Town Elementary School. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there are very strict guidelines in addition to the guidelines for schools for specialists, which I would be happy to share the link with you if you'd like me to. Just let me know and I can send you the email, send you the link in an email. I'm very limited by these regulations. I know for one example, in music, students are not able to sing. The only time our music teacher could have those students be able to sing was during the remote lessons. I, as a phys ed teacher, am very limited and have heavy restrictions put on me when it comes to sanitation, shared equipment, which is not allowed. So during the cohort model, when I have half the class in person, I'm able to really work well with those students, feel like I'm keeping them safe while still teaching them skills. And what I've chosen to do is, as my remote model, is use it as a flipped classroom where I teach the skills, have them practice them at home, and then I can have them work with me in school. I'm not able to do that now with kindergarten and having first grade for two days. It's been very difficult. I'm reworking my entire curriculum for the second time this year. I have been incredibly flexible and patient and doing the best I can. But I will let you know, in my position, I am not able to give the children the curriculum that I should be giving them because I cannot do that with the restrictions that I have. And it's very concerning to me. And while I can't speak for a classroom teacher, I know that everything in our school takes so much longer just a bathroom break or getting ready for lunch to be able to follow the guidelines that we are required to follow. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else for public participation? Again, those that are new who would like to speak, there's an option to raise your hand and we can then open the floor. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names all the way, but Ms. Graca.
Hi, yes, it's Wendy Grasha, parent of a freshman. And I don't know if this concern has been raised before or not, so I just wanted to put it out there for further, hopefully, further discussion. As we talk about bringing students back into the classroom, um, I would like to hear that there would also be an option for parents to choose to have their students who have been in the hybrid model all along be able to move to remote, to fully remote, should they feel uncomfortable with there being more, more students in the classroom. Because I signed up for my daughter to do hybrid, which I let be her choice. It was also with the understanding that we would be at a significantly lesser capacity. And so if you're going to bring students back, and I respect that, I respect that there are parents that want that. I respect that there are parents that need that, and that there are students that need and want that. I respect that. But if that's, I mean, it stands to reason, when the numbers are what they are, that when you increase the bodies in a room and in the hallways, you're going to be increasing the risk of exposure. And so I think that if you're going to let that option be put out there, the option should also be put out there that parents who are not comfortable with that, I don't want to switch to Tecca. I don't want to switch to anything like that. I want to be able to take her out if I want, and she can stay in those same classrooms with those same teachers, but just do it remotely as we feel comfortable doing that. I mean, I understand if there's a little bit of opposition to that, but let me just preface it with this. When my daughter was potentially exposed to a COVID-positive person, we did that. She stayed home for three weeks to protect other students in her classrooms. She never tested positive. There was no reason for her to actually do it. We did it out of respect for protecting other students. So likewise, if more students come to the classrooms, then those parents who are not comfortable with having their students risk, you know, heightened by this, should have the option to do that. Just like I did that with my daughter to protect other people, I should be able to have that option to do that to protect my daughter. And so I'd like that to be part of future discussions as part of the discussions that are going to take place regarding bringing more students back to face-to-face, especially in the higher grades. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Owen. Mr. Chair, if you could unmute. Ms. Owen, I just wanted, can you hear me okay? I just wanted to point out, some of these topics I'll obviously be hitting upon when I talk with my COVID update later on, so.
Okay.
I respectfully ask that, you know, it's another public decision that, you know, we can proceed, but I certainly want to reassure some folks who spoke tonight that I believe I will be touching upon many, if not all, the topics that were referenced in public participation this evening. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else for public participation? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Item number four, acceptance of minutes from January 6. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from January 6.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? I just had one minor change, Renee, on the acceptance of minutes, item number four. I believe the vote was 7:01, when we had one abstention.
Okay, I'll check on that. Thank you.
Good. All right. Any other discussion points? Renee, could we bring this to a vote, a roll?
Sure. Steve Owen.
Yes.
Jeanne Fox.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Yes.
Bob Clark. Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Stankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is unanimous. Item number five on the agenda, presentation to the school committee. Mr. Madeiras.
Yes, Ms. Owen, thank you. It's my privilege to recognize and introduce the principal of Aponequid Regional High School, Dr. Barbara Starky, who's part of our panelists right this evening, who will walk through our annual relatively brief summary of program of studies for 2021, '22. And then when we're complete with that program, Barbara, I would ask that you introduce the athletic director for the second presentation tonight, if you would. Dr. Starky, welcome.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Can I get a wave if you can hear me? Great, thank you very much. I'd like to begin by thanking you for having me. Always a pleasure to bring you the program of studies. Tonight will be very brief because over the past seven or eight years, we've made so many changes to the book that we are in great shape. I would like to thank the school council, and I'd like to thank our curriculum leaders and Nicole Graff, our guidance department head, for input into this document, and remind the committee, as always, that our mission is to create a user-friendly academic planning guide reflective of present offerings and the future goals of ARHS's core values and beliefs and our vision of a graduate. I don't know if you have the program of studies in front of you. Can I get a thumbs up if you do? All right, excellent. I also sent along a one-page handout for you to save you thumbing through it. So I'll work from the handout, and then if you have any questions, if you would just hold those to the end, that would be great. Academic information or changes to the beginning, we removed the graduation requirements for the class of 2020. Although it was a delayed ceremony, we were able to send them off quite successfully. And in place of that, on page nine, we put the class of 2025 graduation requirements. And then we made various adjustments to grammar and word choice throughout. No matter how many times you read it, you find a comma that needs a place. I see Jeanne Fox nodding. She knows all about that. And then, so throughout the book, you'll notice little changes like that. The significant change comes in our business department. We're changing the title from business and technology to business and entrepreneurship. It reflects much more of what's being taught in the department while technology is really moving over to our science department, and that's a title change too. That's science, engineering, and technology. So we're kind of moving things to where they have very much organically fallen. So that's a title change. And then on page 20, we have a change for our community service course that we offer. We are expanding that opportunity now from 11th and 12th grade to include 9th and 10th grade as well. So we're offering our 9th through 12th students opportunities to engage in community service and attain credit for that. So we're excited, and that request came directly from students. We have a group of 9th graders who came up this year who are very civic-minded and really wanted to be engaged in their community despite some of the impediments of the pandemic. So we jumped on board with that idea, and we're giving them pilot credit and moving toward this change. Science department, as I said, there's a title change for the department because we've moved our technology classes in with science and engineering. And to that department, we'd like to add a 2.5 credit course. It is Introduction to Cybersecurity. Sounds very exciting. I want to take it myself. It rounds out our four new technology courses. Our goal three years ago was to have four new technology opportunities for our students. So over the course of your time at Aponequid, you could take at least one tech course per year. We're also looking to use those four tech courses as a family of language courses because it involves coding in place of, or adjacent to, I should say, our language opportunities that we have. So students who aren't going down the road of taking perhaps Spanish or Portuguese and are looking for an alternate way to achieve language credits can take these, this belt of technology courses and achieve language credits. That's what I have for you in the way of program of studies. Questions?
Any questions from the members? Ms. Baron.
Dr. Starky, who will, do we have someone now that is going to be teaching that Introduction to Cybersecurity?
You, Justin Glenn.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the members? Dr. Starky, can you just quickly, my questions relate around language. There's been some confusion around the French language and not being available to the lower grades as well as ASL was an option, but I don't think we had a teacher that was assigned to it. If that had any change to that, can you briefly touch upon those two points?
Sure thing. Last year, when I presented the program of studies, we walked through the transition out of French and into the opportunity to take both Portuguese and American Sign Language, have the opportunity to find people to teach those courses. And I'm very pleased to say that we ended up with a great Portuguese teacher who came to us from Fall River, from the Fall River school system, and she's doing an excellent job starting our Portuguese program, or should I say restarting, for those of you who have been affiliated with the school system for a while. And we spent a good portion of the summer, in addition to planning for the reentry to school and everything else, trying to find an American Sign Language teacher, and we were quite unsuccessful. It's a very difficult position to fill, and we were unsuccessful in all of our inquiry to find someone to teach the course. So it has not been removed from the program of studies and given the opportunity to find a teacher and fill that position. We would love to do it. We'd love to bring American Sign Language to our students at Aponequid Regional High School.
Any other questions by the members? Seeing none, go over to the athletic program.
Yes. Mr. Owen, if I may, at this point, in the absence of further discussion of questions, I would recommend that the program of studies be approved by the board.
I see no issue. Can I, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommended changes with the program of studies?
Yes, so moved.
Mr. Stankowitz, is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a roll call, Renee?
Steve Owen.
Yes.
Jeanne Fox.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Yes.
Bob Clark. Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Stankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And as requested by Mr. Madeiras, I'm introducing to you now one of my favorite people, our athletic director, Mr. James Cabusio. Take it away, Mr. Cabusio.
Mr. Cabusio, I hope you noticed the scope and the brevity in Dr. Starky's presentation as I have my athletic pack in front of me. You're currently on the clock.
Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'll try to make it as brief as possible, but we usually have a lot to celebrate with our student athletes. They do such a great job. 2019, 2020 was a very different year. The report in your hands is based on that academic year, and you can see our students and teams were recognized for their hard work, dedication with All-Stars, All-Scholastics, and conference championships. There's plenty of them throughout. I'd like to list them just so everybody has an idea of how much our kids are accomplishing. The participation levels, believe it or not, even though we did not participate in the spring, we did have a full registration, and the spring season was canceled due to the national health crisis, but we did have a full registration. So it does give us our, we like to have a three-year trend of what's going on. And we had 387 students participate in, or sign up to participate in at least one sport, which is 53% of the population, which has been pretty consistent for us through the years. So we were able to get that data last year because we did have a registration. It'll be a different story next year because, as you know, our fall season was displaced. We're not sure 100% what's going to occur, but we'll move forward from there. Our teams last year also, because there was only 18 of them, we, missing the spring season, 15 still made the MIA tournament, which we use as a benchmark for many of our team's success. In our present academic year, our participation levels are reflecting the national health crisis. We presently have 68 student athletes in our winter season. And as you can see in the document I provided, we are basically providing four programs, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, boy's swim and girl's swim, which consists of seven teams. Unfortunately, indoor track, boys and girls, and ice hockey with Oak Colony was put on a pause and we're not participating. We are participating with girls' ice hockey at Old Rochester in a co-op. We sent two girls over there. Now, what I did want you, which is different, I did provide you with a COVID-19 athletic season timeline just because you're going to hear different things in the papers regarding the MIA season. The South Coast Conference decided to create their own timeline because we didn't think it was practical to start a fall season in the third week of February. And we have basically pushed it back to the middle of March, March 8. And if there's any questions on those timelines, I can answer them at the end. But just so there's no confusion, the South Coast Conference is running a different timeline than the bulk of the state because most of our, the 10-team conference, we do not have turf fields, and it would be problematic to try to start in February. We also were approved this past year for MIA waivers for eighth graders for both boys' and girls' swim and girls' cross-country. So we have three teams where it allows our eighth graders to participate at the high school level. Actually, that's been fairly successful. It may not seem like a lot of participants, but it does help us with the rosters. Now, in terms of facilities update, we continue to upgrade and improve our field irrigation system. In the fall, approximately 24 heads were raised, replaced, and even though we weren't active on the fields, a tremendous amount of work was done on the fields to get them in preparation for a possible F2 season. We'll continue to rotate our fields so that we're not practicing and playing on the same fields, and we seem to have some success with that. We are battling an infestation of grubs, which occurred this past fall. And I'm very pleased that our director of facilities, Greg Goodwin, had immediate action in the fall when we noticed that we were starting to lose a large number of Baker Lane area due to grubs. If anybody's been around here long enough, you know, we've been in different cycles with that. And matter of fact, during the renovation of 99, all the fields were pretty much redone because of that. So we are pleased that our director of facilities did act on that as early as he did past fall. We also have partnered with the National Federation of High Schools Network and invested in a new technology that will allow all events in our gym and our stadium to be live streamed. This NFHS system, we're the first in our 10-team conference to have it. It worked out very well. The pandemic, I mean, it's restricted to the gym and the stadium, but we did get it at a very low cost. Basically, the $2,500 installation cost to obtain $16,000 worth of cameras and technology. We're very fortunate and very pleased to announce that the Athletic Booster Club picked up that $2,500 to enable us to have this project, and it worked out very well to start the winter season. The last item I have is athletic user fees. As the committee knows, we do have a participation step system. The first sport you participate in, $325. The second sport is 200, and the third is 150 with a family cap of 1,100. With this COVID seasons we're having, normally an athletic season is anywhere from nine to 11, fall maybe 12 weeks. Our COVID seasons are going eight to nine weeks. It's not proportional, but we're also having significantly less games, even though the seasons are just slightly shorter. So therefore, our costs for transportation, game officials and supplies are going to be significantly decreased. My question is, we're looking, we haven't assessed any user fees because we did not have a fall season. We are in the winter season now, and we pushed it back a few weeks to ensure that we were going to have a season. What we're looking for is a recommendation from the school committee on how they would like us to apply our existing structure. What I'm asking is, do we stay in our existing system? The first sport they participate, 325, then go 200 or 150? Do we choose one of those fees and charge it across the board because it is a COVID and very unusual season? So I'm hoping to get some sort of recommendation.
Jim, if I may, at this at this point in relation to the 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 fee specifically, so the committee board hears, both you and Dr. Starkey have had some some conversation with me relative to our recommendation. We'd be prepared to share with that for the committee to hear as well. We do feel some adjustments should be made in relation to help out families specifically for this year, as Mr. Cabusio referenced. So I'd be happy to to speak to that, Jim, as it relates to you, my conversation with you and Barbara. Obviously, we put this on the agenda and and we'll collapse it right now under your presentation. If that's okay with the chair, it's under new business, but it would be most appropriate, I think, to talk about it as Jim has pointed out at this time. So, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to make that have that discussion now prior to the board, or do you want to open it up for the board? I'll leave it up to your discretion.
Why don't we open up to the board on the rest of the topic around the athletic piece, and then we can focus on the fees, if that makes sense? So based upon the athletic update, prior year, all the accolades, what have you, any questions or comments from the the members? Mr. Sinkwitz?
Yeah, Mr. Cabusio, thank you so much for for all the work you put in. And it's nice to hear that even though we didn't have any sports going in the fall, there was still a significant amount of work that was done to our facilities. I appreciate that. And I think what I heard you say within your presentation, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that Freetown Lakeville really needs to look into getting some sort of turf surface here on our campus. Is that true?
Well, you know, that's a much bigger discussion. One of our local schools just put it in at a very high price tag. We're very fortunate with the property we have. When you have only one turf field, you're better off getting two or three. What I'd like to see right now is a continual commitment, which we're getting from Greg Goodwin and our director of facilities, of maintaining what we have because we have a large number of fields that we can rotate. We would always take a turf field, Will, there's no question about it. But the price tag on it, I feel that would, we spent a lot of money to irrigate these fields 20 years ago. And if we can continue to maintain the system and rotate the fields, we can give ourselves our our students a decent, a very good athletic experience. A turf field, we would never turn it down, but that's more of a community project because now you're to make it worthwhile, the community would have to come in to use it as often as possible, which which is definitely a possibility. On a much lower financial commitment, if we just continue to spend the money we're supposed to spend on our on our planning surfaces and rotating them properly, short term, that's going to get it get it done for us. But we can see that the turf fields are creeping down from north of Boston down into southeastern Mass, more and more each year. And there's no question that it provides you with amenities, I'm going to call it amenities. But we're fortunate because we're not landlocked here. We have a lot of property. And to put one field in, now people are stacking up when they can use that field, when they can't use it. The most successful programs have had two on it. So thank you for bringing it up. We'd love, we'd take it if it was offered out there. But we really, I feel with our campus, our greatest asset is the acres that we have, which is also problematic for us. We just have to make sure we're maintaining them.
Thank you. I thought I was throwing you a softball there.
Nothing's a softball.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by the members? I know the members have seen this, but just to highlight what Mr. Cabusio says, that the high school sports programs continue to outclass themselves on the sportsman's side of the house, both individually as a team. And that's a credit to you, Mr. Cabusio, as well as Dr. Starkey. So I hope we continue that trend year over year because that seems to be a positive thing in your in your annual update.
And and one last comment on my side in terms of the athletic department. We're incredibly grateful that we're being allowed to play this winter season. Several teams have been quarantined once or even several times. And every time we come back to practice, the kids are engaged. They want to be there. They're working extremely hard. And even with the pauses we've had, it's been worth going through it to see how hard some of our student athletes are working, both in the classroom and on the fields. So we're extremely grateful for this opportunity to be participating in the winter. So thank you.
Mr. Madeiras, I'll turn that back to you related to the topic of user fees.
Yeah, Mr. Cabusio referenced the the fees, and we had had a discussion potentially for for 2021. And it's certainly my recommendation to support a modified scale as it relates. And and Jim and Barbara, if you want to maybe speak to the detail, we had talked about potentially looking at that second sport fee of $200 and and calling that across the board as opposed to the 325 for the sport. But Jim, can you just speak to the specifics? You highlighted a little bit of that. But I am certainly supportive of the athletic director and the principal modifying the fee structure for this year only. And we can revisit it moving forward. But Jim?
Yeah, what we're looking at is our second one, which is the second sport they participate, which is normally the winter for most of our multi-sport athletes, that we would basically have a $200 user fee across the board. And the the reason for that is we normally play a 20-game schedule. We might be playing a 12-game schedule. Now, we're we're playing over an eight, nine-week period, which is normally a nine-to-12-week period. So we're just playing less games. So our costs are going to be less because of transportation, officials and supplies. So if I'm asked for a recommendation, my recommendation would be that second participation fee, use it each season because of the number of pauses that we're going to have. We've yet to, our user fee structure has yet to pay for the entire program, any given year anyway. But financially, we might be surprised that it it might come within the ballpark that we're accustomed to anyway.
And Jim, could you just speak to, so a $200 flat fee for each of those sports, but could you speak to the cap as well and how that potentially?
Well, the cap, the cap is 1,100, and I I wouldn't see any change in the cap. Basically, we're we're just taking that second fee and saying, we're going to use that 200 fee for each season. Regardless of how many you do, it would be 200 for each year. So if you want to look at it this way, instead of paying that 325, 200 and 150, which would be 675, with three-sport athlete, we'd be playing 600. Instead, if if you're a two-sport athlete, you'd be paying 325, 525. So instead of paying 525, you're paying 400 for those two. That's if you really, and that's the bulk of our our program. We have a large number that do just one sport. And we're just trying to look and see to give our families some relief.
I would, from my perspective, I would definitely be on board with a recommendation of modifying it. I'll throw out a challenge to you, Mr. Cabusio and and Ms. Lee's. Is there any thought process of waiving it altogether for this year? Based upon all of the changes, based upon everything else that our student athletes and our students have to go through in all the different challenges, especially in a cohort-type model? Have we put some thought, our pros and cons of just waiving it altogether?
Well, I'll defer that to the business department.
Something I can certainly look into. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to discuss this exact question tonight, but I can certainly look into it for the next meeting.
So so, Mr. Owen, and I'll take responsibility for that. We had prepared the director of finance for a reduced fee because that was kind of the recommendation. Certainly, per board request, we can certainly look into what the capacity is to fund and absorb that that loss across the board for officials, as Jim referenced, and games and so forth. We certainly are are on board, with one intended, to to help our families relative to this year. So we'll certainly follow your direction in relation to that. It would simply hold the process up a little bit. If we're going to take a look at that, I would simply wait till our next school committee meeting where where Kara had an opportunity, if that was ultimately the decision of the board tonight. And Mr. Cabusio would just have to hold on those those winter sport, you know, fees for now. And obviously, we could have them prepared for the other two seasons, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm just one opinion. So I will open it up to the board to see if there's any other questions, comments, concerns or agreement, what have you. Ms. Fox, I see your hand raised.
Okay, I'm having a senior moment. It happens regularly. I would like to know, what about the ice hockey? Wasn't the ice hockey a whole different thing? And did there, was there any change to that with the, I think you said, two girls participating only? Just curious. I for one would love to see no fees this year, but Kara has to work those numbers for us first. But I totally agree, we need to do something. So I just, my senior moment, could you just help me with ice hockey?
No problem, Jean. Ice hockey, boys' ice hockey is not being played because Old Colony is not participating this winter. And half our team was there, was was made up of Old Colony students. So we presently aren't playing ice hockey right now. The girls' ice hockey program, they play at Old Rochester, and they assume Old Rochester's user fee. So ice hockey is really not a part of this picture right now.
Understood. Just, did Old Rochester do anything?
They they are assessing $500 per ice hockey player to participate over at their place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sinkwitz?
Yeah, Steve, thank you so much for bringing that up. I've I've, I guess I'm going to spend all the money tonight between turf fields and this next point. But I would love for for us to research what it would, what it would, what the implications would be if we could waive the user fees for this year. Just given the the circumstances of everything going on and and anything we can do to help families, I think that would be money well spent, given given what we're going through. So I personally, if it wouldn't jam Mr. Cabusio up that much, and he could wait till the next school committee meeting, I would, I would appreciate that information.
I think Ms. Lee's just said, challenge accepted.
Absolutely.
Mr. Clark? You got to unmute yourself, Bob.
Mr. Owen, bear with with us one moment as Ms. Roderick addresses that.
Okay, I got it. I'm just, I'm just going back a long way when when there were no, when I was going to Aponacut, and there were no user fees. Now, I know we've got a lot of, a lot of new sports, extra sports, but I'm with, I'm with Steve. I mean, any way that you really want to give families a break? Don't have any user fees this year. You don't know how many, how COVID is going to affect. You may not have any sports at all, and we're still charging user fees. I mean, you know how many people are out of work, don't have jobs? I mean, a flat fee is better than, is better than the full fee, I know, but I just don't know how we got to this point where we're charging user fees and then we're increasing user fees, now we're increasing user fees again. I guess I yearn for the good old days when when there were no user fees. But I agree that we could, we could, the community could use a break. And if if it's a flat fee, it's the best we can do, then that's the best we can do.
Ms. Owen?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I would recommend that we table this topic. Task Mr. Cabusio with taking a look at those three seasons, calculating those figures, providing them to the finance director. And for our next meeting, we would have a calculation to the specific dollar amounts and numbers. I I think the spirit of it, I see Dr. Starkey and and Jimmy and myself kind of nodding as would a lot of panelists. I I think we obviously all support this type of direction. We just need to obviously see what the bottom line looks like as it relates to that. So I think we can handle that.
Agreed. Mr. Sinkwitz?
Yeah, just one more, one quick thing.
Are you spending more money?
No, well, yes. So it just when you, when we're looking at that bottom line too, taking care of those two students that are are currently going out to Old Rochester to play too, I think, I think those two are fair game and trying to take care of them as well. But that's just my thoughts. I'd just like to see everyone kind of be taken care of here.
So Jim, that would be calculated for any other co-op that might exist as we move forward as well and the impact of that as well. You can make sure that's included, Will.
Thank you.
One last question for you, Mr. Cabusio, before we we sort of let you go here. We have the potential of a fall-two season coming up here in in the crazy world that we're in to relatively similar sports that a lot of our athletes participate in. And I'm talking about cross-country and winter track now in the same season. Are these athletes going to be, have to choose which sport to go in?
No. Sure that the MIA, what they're looking at is a modification or hybrid form of it. Because in our conference, we can't run both sports simultaneously. We don't have the athletes. A lot of the indoor track athletes are soccer players or other fall athletes. So that's something we're revisiting as a as a conference, and we haven't come up with a decision yet on that. But that's definitely an issue that we've talked about in our particular conference because half our teams, at least half of the 10, would not be able to field indoor track team and a cross-country team and two soccer teams and field hockey program. So there's a hybrid of that indoor track, cross-country coming out that's not been, it's it's not been released yet.
Good to hear. Thank you. One last opportunity to roast Mr. Cabusio, I mean, ask him any questions. All right. Thank you. Mr. Madeiras, I'll leave it up to you. If we can let these two go, I'm sure there's other activities with Dr. Starkey and Mr. Cabusio.
I was gonna, first of all, thank Dr. Starkey representing high school and also Mr. Cabusio. If you want to close, Jimmy, with it being a Laker day, it can be a Laker evening. I'd be okay with that, too.
We still got a little practices going on in the gym. We still got a little more for that Laker day end. So thank you for having me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in the agenda, old business item six, 6A, FY21 budget.
In the heart of spending money, I'm here to go over the FY21 budget and actual results. Included in your packet is the general fund overview for FY21 year-to-date through January 14, 2021. The revenues of $19.1 million and expenditures of $16.9 million look reasonable when compared to the prior year. I will continue to closely monitor the results of operations compared to the budget. There are no current updates to the revenue sources projected for FY21 from the last meeting. In relation to the Federal Cares Act, which has funded our PPNE and other extraordinary In relation to the Federal Cares Act, which has funded our PPNE and other extraordinary expenses, I had indicated during the last meeting that the funding had been extended through December 31st, 2021. An extension of the funding doesn't automatically provide us with more funding. As a result, we have started the conversations, started the process, working with Freetown and Lakeville to see if they can provide us any additional assistance beyond December 2020. It is our expectation, based on those recent conversations, that Lakeville may have additional funds to help us and possibly Freetown may have some additional funds to assist us with. There are limitations to those levels of assistance. The towns are still exploring the possibility and recognize that we do have needs and eligible expenditures. Basically, they're trying to assess how much funding they have left to assist us with it. Our FY21 COVID projected expenditures in your packets were also adjusted for the projected costs for TECA for the spring semester, which is estimated to be approximately $200,000. And also, those costs include all of the recent Chromebook acquisitions that we have made as a district.
Any questions for Ms. Lee's on FY21? Ms. Lee's, I believe, is that number for TECA less than what we? I don't want to say budgeted for, because I know we had an original number, but the, the number that we were going in for the second term is less than what we anticipated, correct?
That's correct. I believe we had originally anticipated same as fall, closer to 300,000, and the cost is 200. Looks like it'll be 200,000.
Okay. And then with the new CARES Act going through the end of 2021, any limitations as far as which budget we can use those against, whether it's FY21 or FY22?
No, not necessarily. We just would have to make sure that the spending is by December 31st, 2021 and that we have adequate funds to cover. We are also anticipating hopefully some additional SIR funds. They're talking about the potential of three, 3.7 times the amount that we originally received in the first round. So we're hoping that we have a, and some good news to deliver eventually on that front. So that could cover costs like, you know, masks and gloves and, you know, additional technologies to support remotely.
Thank you. Any other questions on FY21? Seeing none, we'll go on to FY22.
Included in your packet is a summary of the status of the FY22 budget preparation efforts. We had initially prepared several budget scenarios to determine the impact assessments to the member towns and shared them internally with the administrative leadership team. We will proceed with presenting one budget model that best reflects an extension of our mission, strategic goals, vision, school improvement plans, and will continue to utilize the budget to raise the bar for our district students. The preliminary budget that is presented at the next meeting on February 3rd will likely need some future adjustments as we will still be waiting on Chapter 70 and 71 funding estimates from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We will also be awaiting for RFPs for both health insurance and transportation, which could significantly affect the budget estimates. A modified budget calendar is also provided where a public hearing date has been projected for March 24th, which is based on the town meeting dates that we have received. Lakeville's of May 10th and Freetown's of June 7th, which are, have a potential to change, but those are the days currently.
Mr. Owen, if I may, before discussion, just to, Kara did a wonderful job just articulating that. I think the key points in that presentation is the third was always our presentation date. But we did move up the public hearing to, to match that town meeting in Lakeville and also to address the requirement of 30 days as it relates to the public hearing, as it relates to the vote taken. So please be aware that that public budget hearing is a little earlier than we've done in the past, but we're also, it's also as a result of Lakeville potentially having their meeting as early as May 10th. So that was, that was the adjustment that was made. We feel comfortable that we will be able to meet all those timelines, but I'll bounce it back to you, to chair. But we will do a PowerPoint presentation. You'll get your packets and booklets and as we've done in the past, our plan is to have those ready for February 3rd.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Barron?
Mr. Owen, do we have a date yet for the regional FinCon meeting?
We do not.
Do you expect one shortly?
I, I expect one. I don't have a timetable. We have reached out to the members with very little response. The towns have actually had some turnover in some of the key positions as well, but I have not heard anything as far as a rescheduling of a meeting.
Okay, I spoke to one of the town committee members who asked today if, when we were going to get a regional meeting together. So perhaps the ball's in our court and we should set a, set a meeting date?
I will resend the multiple emails that have been sent and hopefully we'll get our response. But the last response that I heard from them was they were not prepared to begin. But we can definitely resend to try and reconvene that.
Thank you, I'd like that, thank you.
Mrs. Barron, Mr. Owen, if I may, just to concur, Steve is, as the chair of the regional FinCon has sent multiple, but I think now that we have the target date of February 3rd, we can probably establish a regional FinCon right after that. And that makes a ton of sense because we'll have some numbers there and, and certainly be able to accelerate the process. But I do know Steve has handled that task and I'm confident. The one question, just one February 3rd, folks, to keep in mind is depending on what decision the governor makes, this, it will either be another remote meeting or i- if the extension of participation is allowed or that meeting will be back in the library. But it'll be a visual presentation regardless. But it's my hope that the restrictions are potentially pulled up and we can use the library setting. Obviously, Lake County will be supportive of presenting it out to the whole community, but that's the only question right now, whether we need to do that remotely, once again, based on state restrictions or go back to what has been our, our previous format.
Definitely looking forward to that presentation on the 3rd. I'm very curious in how we're going to manage the potential increase in special education services that may be required as a result of this year. So we definitely conscious of that.
Yeah, if I may, just to give you a little sneak preview, without going into too much detail, clearly, we, we've had to take a real conservative approach relative to revenue and decisions being made at the state level, more so than ever, right? Because we have declining enrollment and we factored all those in. Kara's done a real nice job working with the leadership team to provide a real transparent. You're going to see a similar model with more detail. And like I, I think kickstarting the budget process on February 3rd would be real helpful for the board. So we'll have that packet, those packets for you. And we're right in the final stages of kind of developing that, that start of the budget process for the community. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other questions by the members, we'll move on to new business, seven A, COVID-19 report.
So before I get into some of the COVID issues that came up in public participation, but also I just want to note for the board, I won't go into any detail. I've provided you once again, the class size updates reflective of the most recent numbers. They were in your packet. School choice numbers are at standard 73, homeschooling 125 students, and TECA has been adjusted to 155 for the second semester, as Kara referenced earlier. Financially, all the end numbers are pretty stat, didn't dramatically change from November. But obviously, we still see about 100 fewer, less students based on some of those decisions made relative to COVID. So that's probably a pretty good lead-in, unless there are specific questions on the numbers. I'll try to highlight some items for the board that I typically provide as it relates to COVID. And I certainly know through the attendees present tonight, a lot of interest in relation to kind of what future plans look like. So I'll go, go right into some, some real, I'll try to be brief and then certainly open up to the board and reflective of community concerns and questions. Overall, many of the participants said earlier tonight, I can't, I can't, I have to agree. We've had a lot of success in our schools with the current model as we enter the midpoint. Keep in mind, we're at day 77, right? So day 85 is the midpoint, which is actually February 1st. We're almost halfway through the year, five months going on six months. We just reached earlier this evening, our 100th positive case, 100 positive cases within the district. Again, keep in mind, that's 2.8% of our school community, 2.8. Only 2.8 in those positive cases. In most instances, are the result of home. One of the participants early in public participation referenced seven individual cases at the middle school. They were all at home. They were all cases of individual students with no close contacts and families reported to us instances that have happened within the family. So we've seen that, we've seen that across the board and I think we'll continue to see that and we have to monitor that. Our calendar is a current hybrid model through April 2nd. I do not have any recommendations at this time to change our model. Having said that, it does not deter us from looking at the plan, which has been on the website, which is to take a look at the current trends in the town. And then we're in the red category. We've been in the red category, positivity rate in both Freetown and Lakeville is extremely high. But we've had success with a gradual, phased-in, safe approach to bringing back more students in person. We did it with kindergarten students in December. We just started with first grade students in both Lakeville and Freetown this week. All of our special education families had the opportunity and are in the process of returning to full in-person instruction. We are balancing the use of three-foot spacing and six-foot spacing across classrooms. The next projected target dates for potential changes would be February 22nd, which is the Monday after's February vacation, more than a month away. We are targeting one grade per school at the elementary level through K to eight, consistent with now President Biden's approach to bring more K to eight students back in. So we're going to be looking at, at Swanson and Freetown Elementary School, grade two, the intermediate school, grade four, and at the middle school, grade six. We have yet to determine the class and our grade and our target population. Had a conversation as latest today with Dr. Starkey and we'll have all that information out to families in the coming weeks. What we have done since November, and actually October, when we rolled out this process, is we've made sure that the leadership team had six-week notice, that staff had four-week notice and that families and parents had at least two-week notice. I'm sharing a little insight into the plan. The other target date, by the way, is April 26th, after April vacation. And that was something that I rolled out in the timeline over a month ago now. Again, all of this contingent upon watching what the data looks like and whether we can do this safely and see our students return and staff return to a safe environment. Keep in mind, folks, that when we went with the hybrid model, ironically, a lot of folks talked about my five-day on, five-day off as, in a complimentary manner this evening. And I thank those compliments. But if you recall, that 80/20 survey was for full remote in September. The vast majority of stakeholders were strongly encouraging this board to consider a full remote model. We have seen much success and we continue on a daily basis to monitor with a dashboard now. In fact, just I want to be clear for, for community members in the board. This past week, superintendent's corner, I pulled back on the letter because I was a little concerned about the daily letter becoming white noise for staff and parents not paying attention to the information. So we're highlighting it on the dashboard. We routinely update the dashboard in the morning and afternoon to catch accurate data as it relates to positive cases and close contacts. We, we do have the town information up there. Every Thursday night or Friday morning, we roll that out in relation to what the Freetown and Freetown and Lakeville are dealing with. We even identify the state numbers, so you can see the number of students and staff throughout the Commonwealth. We feel very confident in working with our health professionals, our school physician, the Board of Health. I actually spoke to the Board of Health nurse today. And she, I reached out to her and we had a conversation relative to decisions that are being made. If not on a daily basis, certainly a weekly basis. We've rolled out the Abbott-Binex Now test. We've, we're using that antigen test at all five schools. We used it today in relation to that piece. We are looking at pool testing, but there's some questions in relation to the state rolling that out. So we feel we have these multi, multi-layers in place to make a safe determination. Again, I'll stress, I'll put it in the superintendent's corner this week. We have not, in bold print, identified a specific date and, and requirement that this is going to happen. But we were asked and tasked with kind of rolling out what a plan would look like so people can make preparations relative to daycare. So my school leaders can make adjustments to the schedules, to recess, to lunch, all of those things that we can take into account. We will not do away with a hybrid model before April 2nd, at least based on my recommendation. But keep in mind, if all of those grades come back in person and they're hybrid now, that would mean 50% of our student grades in, in the pre-K to 12 would be back in. If we went that way, we'd have K1, 2, 4, 6, and then some portion of the high school. So it, it's not a full in-person plan a month from now. It is a very slow gradual, and I know there are some community members who feel maybe it's too slow and that we should see more of these students at a faster pace. I think the pace and the delivery that we rolled out in the fall and what we're doing now is consistent. We're bringing back over 40 students from TECA this, that, that were full remote in the fall that are coming back to us reflected in. And we still have quite a few TECA families that are going to have the benefit, once again, rightfully so, of having a full remote option moving forward. And we do have a window of time. Obviously, that transition becomes more challenging to, to add additional students to that full remote model once the semester starts up, which, which does start up next week. As you know, the, the DPH, Mass DPH recently removed the requirement for the flu vaccine, so it's no longer required. We had a very high percentage of our students and they feel that the flu season has, is, obviously, I think our, are wearing masks, are social distancing, all the safeguards that are put in place have provided the state and the Commonwealth and certainly the schools here in Freetown, Lakeville with a structured, safe environment for our students to learn. Please take note of the dashboard. There's everything transparent about that. You have a couple of isolated cases, over five schools, nearly 2,700 students, and you may have one positive case that has close contact impact. And, and you need, so you need to look when you hear 100 positive cases, 2.8%. Think of the numbers and think of where we're at and where we need to be. It is my opinion and, and belief professionally, based on medical expertise and professionals who have, who I speak to almost on a daily basis, that our students are safer here, our staff are safer here than in, in many locations within our communities based on, I think, people not adhering to what we can do within the schools. So I'm confident that we will proceed with a safe model. We have done that to date. We feel good about that. The educational leaders are on board to make that happen. I do know, and, and I certainly see all of those individuals. I, I understand the anxiety level that staff have as it relates to the number of students in there. And I understand parents who are anxious. But to date, I think this board has been very supportive and trusted me. We have all three models in place and we can make adjustments appropriately. If we need to look at full remote, we will make that decision. If we can bring more students back in, ideally, the Commissioner Riley in the state has basically said, he believes that based on vaccinations and decisions and things that are being happening now, that the vast majority of students can return to in-person instruction before the end of this, this school year. Not just in Freetown and Lakeville, but in the Commonwealth. So I, I did, Steve, thank you. I, I apologize for maybe going a few extra minutes, but I tried to hit a point, I think, a couple of items that came up in the public conversation as it relates. I am going to highlight some of these things in my superintendent's corner this week, once again, just so I can be as transparent as possible in relation to kind of where, where we're heading. Be happy to answer questions specific from the board, reflective of their constituents and stakeholders. And I'll turn it back to you, Chairman Owen.
Any questions by the members? Mr. Sylvia?
Thanks, Stephen and Rick. Thank you for, for always keeping safety in mind and the detailed planning. Can you just clarify back to the public participation point for, for the grade levels that you bring in and are planning to bring in moving forward, assuming everything remains trending in the right direction?
Correct.
It's an opportunity to come back to full in-person. However, you could still participate in, in the remote option, like, like the parents suggested in public participation.
I, actually, that's not, not accurate, Steve. So the model, so I want to be sure we're clear. We, we've offered a full remote with TECA for those families. Hybrid model obviously has a combination of synchronized learning and, 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 you know, a blend of both. Hybrid model obviously has a combination of synchronized learning and 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 you know, a blend of both. In the model that we're bringing back full in person, at least what we've done to date in kindergarten and in first grade. Parents were given ample notification and those students um are coming back full in person and do not have the option to remain uh remote. As it relates to those grades. So the plan as it currently stands would be that those grades, which are hybrid now, so keep in mind, we're talking. Uh most of those students, right, are spending fifty percent of their time. Actually, many of them are spending more than fifty percent because we've already identified them with special education and so forth. But for that percentage of that percentage of forty to forty-five percent that they're in the current hybrid model would need to. Be identified and understand that this is full in person from this point on. Now, having said that, obviously, if if parents need to keep their children home. Um and you know, and and attendance issues that come up, obviously, they would still have the ability to connect. Um but we would not, we don't have the capacity um in spite of the 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 new president talking about resources. To um to double up our staffing numbers, for example, and and provide a remote um learning component in addition. So. So I just need to be clear, Steve, on that, to your your point. Um those grades that would be coming back would need to come back full in person.
Okay, I think I was just thrown by the word opportunity. It's sort of in my mind implied that there was a chance to stay home. On the grades that came back recently, were there many families that opted to in a different direction or everyone just came back?
Zero, zero. We had one hundred percent participation in that decision um for those families to come back. Um you know, there there were were conversations that were had by the principal and in some instances with me in relation to families choosing a full remote. I literally had a conversation anecdotally with a mom yesterday about um about feeling comfortable, but um so so to date, again, only, you know, it's a small sample. Steve, to to the to the opportunity piece, just to make sure I clear up that uh miss maybe miscommunication on my part. So we did offer special education students and some target populations, the opportunity to remain in the hybrid right now. But as we went to the full grade level expansion, as I'm we're considering in February or early March. Um there there was not a hybrid option as it relates to those those grades, specific K and one, and that would be the case for two, four, six. And again, I just want to pause for everybody here in Free Town Lakeville to hear that. That's only one grade for each of the schools, right? So we break down that component. Um and that addresses transportation, a variety of things, though. But Steve, thank you. I I think it's important that people understand that. Um that we we try to build in a a great deal of time and and understanding, and principals will send home individual letters explaining all the components that are built into. Making sure this is a safe approach. We can pivot though quickly enough if we need to and revert to a hybrid and or remote. Uh at any point, we're we're prepared to do so within a day timeframe.
Great. Thanks for expanding on that.
Any other questions? Ms. Barron.
Yes, do you have any, um have you heard any? Negative comments about the kindergarten and first grade coming back from parents in particular or or teachers?
I I have not heard um from parents specifically concerned about decisions that have been made as it relates to that at all. I'm and I'm not suggesting that hasn't happened at the classroom level perspective or with the principals. Principals usually, I ask on a daily basis, just to give you an example, we rolled out grade one this week. I actually contact both Principal Penalt and Principal Ward each day, asking them to check in. I actually saw the kids. My anecdotal stories have been extremely positive. I'm not suggesting there's not one individual, but I am not aware. Of of concerns in relation to to moving forward. Um in fact, in most instances, the kids are were thrilled to 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 tell me, and I think I've shared it with a couple of board members, as I walked through the classroom last week. They were, they were, in case I didn't know, they were telling me how excited they were about coming back to full in person, and if I had heard. So I thought it was a an interesting piece. I'm not so sure high school students would give me that same, you know, that same excitement, but um. Again, we're we are taking a look, so I think it's important to note, though. Um I don't mean to digress from Sherry's question, so no, I don't, I'm not aware of 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 issues as it relates to those. Again, we just started in first grade in fairness, but specifically to kindergarten, I am not aware of 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 concerns. High school will kind of look at where we are. You notice I didn't really identify a grade. We are trying to make. Um the senior second semester a great experience for those kids. Um and and considering everything they've been up against today, but we also are trying to keep in mind um. Other grade levels and kids that are struggling there too as well. And Dr. Stark, he's going to come back with, as you saw tonight, a pretty articulate plan as it relates to. To bringing more students back in person that might deviate slightly from the elementary approach. I think it's critical that our younger kids come back in person if we can do it safely.
Ms. Fox.
Um I'm going to go back to Jill's comments on the three foot. Um buffer zone that is very difficult to achieve with the very young children. Um and the fact that it's it would impact some of her phys ed programs, but I can see that in the classroom as well. I just would like, I mean, I it's wonderful that these kids are back. I'm sure for those families, it's wonderful. Um but but the three foot has a lot of people concerned, so I would hope going forward that we would help staff. As much as we will help families understand the significance of that distance and its importance to the health and safety of the folks there.
Yeah, so the so absolutely, Gene, we certainly need to be make that part of the process. It'll be part of a Q and A that principals will respond to parents at each grade level specific to the needs of their school. Keep in mind that um the state all along since the the beginning. Um has has said safely, the three to six foot parameters can be established. We have simply taken the most conservative, safe approach to date. And we continue to monitor that, but.
Right, but but Jill's point was, young children don't observe the distance. It's a little bit more difficult with the very young. That was my only point.
Yeah, no, I I I think Jill and I actually, you're absolutely right, Jean. Uh Jill and I have had actually conversation that I don't necessarily disagree with her position. That three feet becomes one, six becomes three with younger children. Um but even in those instances, um to date, we're experiencing that. We have not seen uh school community spread as it relates to um the impact, and so. We need to monitor that. We need to keep masks on. We need to socially distance. I I actually sent a message to my leadership team today saying now is not the time to be complacent. Um which some some members said, right? I think it's even time to be more diligent. If we're going to do this properly and safely and make sure that busing is is sufficient and just the way we set up the structure allows us to maintain numbers there. Um I I do hear loud and clear, though I do want parents that are tuning in tonight to understand. I understand your anxiety and 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 the stress in in relation to what you're watching on TV and what's happening in the community. But our schools are safe. We feel strongly that the plan that we're articulating is a gradual, slow approach that stays within our hybrid model. And will provide the best um chance for safe and successful education for our kids. But uh again, I'll have another update on February third. Um you know, definitive decisions have not been made, but we really thought it was important to start um. Making sure that we communicate and 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 be transparent about those timelines, so so families can start preparing. Their children and uh you know, childcare, for example, in some instances, as it relates to rolling that out.
Any other questions by the members? Mr. Maderas, I do have uh two questions for you. Um there's been a lot of uh news, especially in Massachusetts, that. Uh teachers in the February, March timeframe would be eligible for the vaccine. Do we have a plan in place for the teachers within? Our district as of yet?
I've had conversation as late as yesterday with with town officials and um I. What I'm hearing from both the commissioner's office at the state level and also locally is there will be some plans in place to address all educators in the near future. I don't have the specifics. If I'd had them and I could share them with you publicly, I would. But I am confident that um as we look through these phases and we get through the the different um groups that also need to to be addressed, whether it be seniors and. And homes and so forth, that educators are well up there and and we will have something local um to address vaccinations moving forward. Um I just don't have that information at this point, but but I am hearing, and I have a conference call with the commissioner later this week, all the superintendents do. That we may, we should have some information prior to February vacation in relation to that potential, which would obviously just provide one more. Um sense of security if all the staff, in fact, will have received vaccinations with it, or at least have the ability to receive vaccinations within the schools.
Um I do think it's great that we offer testing in the school. I'm going to put on my parent hat here based upon the rules. Um that if a student gets tested, regardless if it's positive or negative. They need to leave the school immediately. Uh so help me understand as a parent why we should have our, why we should. Opt in to have our children tested as part of the school program.
Yep, so so I I I was a a strong um supporter of bringing the Abbott antigen test in, and you described it correctly. Um the nurses are fully on board and have been trained. It allows us and it allows a parent, before they even have to. Pull into the parking lot at the school to know that not only their child is symptomatic, but is maybe tested positive and or negative, obviously is developing some symptoms, isn't doing well. It also, so so that's the family aspect of it. It will certainly give you immediate information within fifteen minutes. I took the test myself. It was actually like twelve minutes, sends you a text and email. So a parent driving into to to school um from a workplace would actually know before they even actually came to pick up their child. Um where they stood as it relates to the ancient test and then take the necessary steps. The other critical piece to this, though, as we're bringing back more students, and I think it's important to 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 underscore that is. It allows us to do the the proper um tracing as it relates to close contacts, right? Once we know we have an identified student and or staff member who's symptomatic. Now, keep in mind. I think the communities have done a phenomenal job of staying home when they're not feeling well, so they're not symptomatic. But in this instance, where we have symptomatic staff or students, we can immediately start contact tracing, identify students. Um who might be at risk and 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 start that process much sooner, Mr. Owen, and I and I would strongly encourage, although it's voluntary. Uh parents and staff members to register uh to be allowed to to do that. We do have those in place at all the schools. Um but certainly well within your right to not do that. Um but we feel it provides a a whole nother layer of protection um as we bring more students back into school.
Um and and I'll just close my question in just a more of a response to what came from the public participation. Um I I don't want to speak for all the members, but I know several their opinions on this. Uh it is definitely ironic that we are here in a remote fashion instead of an in-person school committee. Um only because of the legal aspect by the governor. Who specifically called out this type of meeting that cannot meet in person. Uh otherwise, we would make every attempt to meet, if we're asking our students and staff to be in person, that we should hold a school committee meeting in person. As long as it is safe, uh and we provide those guidelines there. So uh it doesn't go unnoticed. Uh there was a several. Um offline conversations around that, and you know, it just came down to a a legal obligation, why we had to have the meeting in this format.
Just Owen, on that same vein, if I may, before you move on to the next topic, I I think it's ironic as well that I think that we've done such a phenomenal job with synchronized and. Learning and A C R K is learning that there's a comfort level in relation to teaching at home now. Um where it there was a lot of angst in a lot of communities, um including this community in relation to delivering appropriate instruction. With half of our students um on computers and devices, and now we're. We're lobbying for potentially keeping that as the ideal model. Um I do think um. Obviously, some form of remote learning is here to stay for all of us in education, um and there's certainly a a need to do that. So. Um I will continue to keep the board and the community updated. I will respond to any texts, emails, or phone calls, folks, uh within twenty-four hours, almost in all instances. Um and I'll I'll try to be as transparent as possible in relation to our our next decisions and plans. Thank you.
Okay, um one last option for the rest of the board. All right, seeing none, we'll move uh seven B. We already had the discussion. We tabled that till the February third meeting. Um moving on to uh item eight on the agenda, reports to the committee, Director Finance Carol Lees.
Um I'd just like to speak briefly in relation to our performance contracting construction project. Included in your packet is an update to our train project status report. As a a further update from this report, um I just wanted to bring attention to two items. The first, that the middle school boiler replacement project, there will be significant work done the week of February vacation. And the second, um this one last update, throughout the buildings, there will be two electrical engineers from train. Um in the weeks ahead, mapping out the HVAC control systems in preparation for the installation of the new building control system. Um and that concludes my update to train. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lees on train? Great. Anything else, Ms. Lees, from your perspective?
Um no, not at this time.
Okay. Um item nine on the agenda, subcommittee updates regional finance. Um and we'll reach out again to coordinate that subcommittee meeting and we'll let the full board know. Um when and if we have a date related to that. Uh superintendent's evaluation committee?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Fox, I I did provide for for the subcommittee and Ms. Fox, I think we'll speak to that. My initial draft goals uh and probably some consideration for a future survey, which I know the subcommittee. Uh has access to and probably should uh be prepared at some future meeting uh to report out to the entire board. I think Jean will speak to that, Steve, at this time.
Well, that that was basically what I was going to say. I had asked for you to resend the goals you have. I need to circulate them to the subcommittee. And it seems to me that prior survey I developed. Um so I may need to find that and revisit it.
I I have, I will provide that for the subcommittee and through you, Jean. You actually did facilitate that. We actually took care of it through the. Through the website and uh made it a pretty simple task, and and I certainly can, my office can help facilitate that. You just provide that to Renee. I'll I'll share that document once.
If you would, since I would like to have consistent data, um so I don't want to switch it up. Thank you.
It's very timely, just subcommittee wise. It would be two years out, and I think that's a good timeframe to do that, and certainly in light of the circumstances this year, to get some. Input from stakeholders prior to evaluating me at the end of the year.
Yep, thank you.
Um nine C, policy subcommittee. Um.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um I am making a recommendation that the following um. Sections be approved at this time somewhat out of sequence, the subcommittee uh made up of, I want to, I apologize, I believe, Mr. Sylvia, Ms. Barron, Mrs. Ms. Ramsden and Mr. Owen um have already approved, have already taken a look at this and reviewed it. We have looked at section J. We haven't quite completed that task. There's been a little uh, there's been something happening in twenty twenty-one, I think that's. Deviated from policy review at this time, but in light of a a recent DESI uh review. And updates that are needed for our website is my recommendation, based on subcommittee approval. That these that action be taken on these specific items as it relates to a recent review that we had uh with the Department of Education.
Uh I will entertain a motion to uh. Accept policy JB, J I C F B uh into the policy manual.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jean. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a second. And Miss Sylvia, I'll open up the discussion. I know Ms. Ramsden had a point.
Um I just had a question, Rick, on the policy J I C F B, which was the bullying prevention policy. Going back to my notes from when we met way back when. Um I had a note that you were going to check to see if that was the policy that was in the current handbooks. Is that correct? Is this the policy that is in the handbooks?
I I'd have to get back to you, Laura, on that. It is, I I want to say yes, but I'd have to clarify that position. You're right. It's been a while since we had that. I do recall you asking that question. Um I I I'm not sure if we had the timeframe that we addressed that, if it was included in the in the handbooks just from a timing perspective, but so I need, I'll need to get back to you on that. It it should be or will be moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Um I just had a question on JB and um. As you read this, um it references the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee in the first part of this. I don't, I don't, it should it be committee or the district? Because it does reference the F R L S C and its staff uh would abide by this.
I think that should be a district piece, Steve. I think it, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I I think changing any reference to F R A C, which is a school committee, should be F R L S D.
Reflective of the district, correct?
Correct, okay. Anybody have any objection to that?
Good point, Steve.
Um any other discussion points? Seeing none, Renee, can we do a roll?
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Gene Fox.
Yes.
Gary Barron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Yes.
Bob Clark. Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Sanquits.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Moving on, item 10, any other business come before this meeting?
Only, Ms. Owen, I want to note that our next school school committee meetings, we have negotiation sessions with the bargaining groups prior to that. And I'll be sending out information. And all the bargaining units have approved and agreed to those dates, which are February 3rd and February 24th. So we are moving forward there.
Great, thank, anything by anybody else? All right, upcoming dates, we do have our next school committee meeting, February 3rd at 6:30. TBD on the format, hang tight on that. And then we also have a school vacation week following that meeting in February. Less there are any other objections at 8:04, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Renee?
Steve Owen.
Yes.
Gene Fox.
Yes.
Gary Barron.
Yes.
Jen Blum.
Yes.
Bob Clark. Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Sanquits.
Yeah.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Stay safe.